Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.[1013.38]
Authority, I am currently on that one and I would like to stay on that one.
Tracy Koch was on there.
I'd like to nominate Tim Petrie to be on there.
I think Tuesday's.
Oh, Tuesday just because it's convenient.
And they use.
Yeah.
It's interesting though.
It is, it is pretty interesting.
Well, I'm for him and he has something to do with it.
But then we.
So anyone interested in that one? Ken is being pumped to that.
That's a good one.
Shocking, I think she knows a lot.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty interesting. You don't have to. Know a lot, they teach you pretty quickly. Well, for me, I had no idea what was going on here, so that's why I said it, you know, a lot because I just like.
I'll try it out.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if the E A D has got a commitment from Tracy, she's still an interesting thing to do without the A D C as a citizen.
I have not heard that.
I have a lot of pressure each to it.
Okay, yeah, um, but I consider to that.
Because we've got a couple of citizens and A D Cs.
Right.
Commission for Equal Opportunities in Housing. Uh, Tim and Bonnie are on that.
We.
Sure, we'll stay on there, there's nothing to do.
We, we have to have a submitted over a fair housing complaint. Have a fair housing complaint. Be assured if we did, to a line of committee, we can agree by the city attorney to answer that.
Bonnie spoke for you, but. Okay, good. Uh, next one, Committee on Aging, Bill's on that one.
Want to take that one more? Pardon? Want to take that Committee on Aging?
Um, I guess I can do that if, is that, is that the one my wife's on?
Right.
Is that, is that a conflict of interest that? Betty's already signed that committee.
Yes, I don't think it's prohibited by law, you may or may not obscure your vote or.
Both all, I get it.
Especially if I can stay out of it.
No, I, if you don't, I, it's not prohibited.
Um, I just, you do well. Not that he's old, but just likes to talk.
You can stay, you can stay if you want me, whatever. Where are you?
We can always talk about this more. Think about it.
What?
Think about it.
Why don't we decide it now?
Yeah.
Who wants to?
Sure, I'll take it.
Okay. Also, anyone who else wants it? So far Mark's on it.
Is there only, is there only one council member for it?
Yes. Mark, it is. Uh, Community Development Block Grant Housing Committee. Bonnie is on it.
Mm-hmm.
Good for that?
Sure, we put, there's nothing to do with that.
Okay.
But this is the one where, um, like, this is the committee where we're giving up, um.
There will be an annual report prepared and so, yep.
I'll take care of it, it will, we're, not take care of it, but I'll receive it.
Received it. And Bill? Go to that one yet, or are you going to?
Yeah, well, it's, it's never.
True.
We may have to meet.
Did maybe one time or not, but.
It would probably be interesting to meet.
There's topics, topics.
Yeah, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see that.
Actually, oh, okay, you were going about this, oh.
On second by this list.
Thank you, because, yeah, if you were working off this seat, the rest of us were looking at this one, yeah. Where is it, please, are it that?
Ah, sorry.
That's an omission, so if you, if you were jumping over it, I don't know what's next.
What, Greg, some of those committees were canceled because they never met, was this one of them?
I think we only need two council members, that's it.
Okay.
You may not agree.
So then we'll keep Bonnie and Bill on that.
Okay.
Okay, I will now move to the packet instead of the single sheet. Uh, Environmental Advisory Board. Darla's currently on that and one vacancy for council.
I have a question about that. Before, before Doug and Shannon were elected on the council, they both were, um, citizen members. And I know they're both entrusted and, but. If, if Shannon and I were both on utilities, if we were to be in another committee. If we had Doug along with us, or I don't know, it's like it would be, if her and I are together, it's a, it's a. You know, it's too out of range.
It's a husband and core.
It's a core, but it just, how, how can that possibly be if it's only three people on that other committee? Because I don't want to lose either one of them, but I just think that's kind of.
Oh, I see, I see.
Or, yeah, sorry.
Well, I, we had a discussion the other day, typically at the bottom of our committee agendas, there's, it's noted that numbers of other committees may be present, but maybe more of those other committees. And in this instance, say, two of you are on, two, two of you that are on utilities from this committee, you're clearly meeting in your capacity, it's the A D, your following, and then Shannon.
Right.
So, you're okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I know we talked once about there'd be three council members.
Right.
City attorneys aligned in the past that the ordinance specifies, or sometimes statute in this case here, specifies two council members and X number of citizens. The number of council members he would ensure is, as being a limiting factor to, two means two, not three.
Right.
But that's on the clock right now here.
Okay, so I'm going to take one of the two positions, but that's interesting too. And we're not on, I think, we're not on any other committees, but what I was thinking is because Shannon's been really, really super involved in it. If she were to come as a citizen.
To any, any other council member can come there.
All right, yeah, does that sound okay?
But it can't be a citizen.
She can be a citizen.
No, but she could show, you know.
Anyone, I'm sure for a fact, I mean, all the other tents are, like, commission meetings, Mark has in the past, who's been on council.
Okay. Doug, did you want to be on?
Sure, I'll continue to be on.
That's super.
That's.
Yeah, okay.
Geez, I was looking for a minute.
So we are good with Darla and Doug?
Sure, I'll stay on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Library Board, we just need, uh, Bill?
Tracy.
Yep.
That was Tracy.
Oh, my gosh. So I'll do it.
Joint review, that's just the public.
Oh, yeah.
As a citizen. So, yeah, Library Board, let's Tracy.
Mark, you were on.
I'm like, so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Anyone else? Shannon's got it? Uh, let's see, Plan Commission is currently Adam. Anything you'd like to say?
Yep.
Okay. Also, anyone else wants to join? Uh, let's see, Police and Fire Commission, that is just all citizens.
There.
Uh, Room Tax Commission?
This one's a little interesting, and I apologize, I didn't, Scott, we talked to you earlier on this one, although you may have noted, the members are designated as City Manager, Council President. Two additional members who may be members of council or citizens. And one by statute in our ordinance, one representative of the hotel motel industry, uh, from within the city limits, that's statutory. The present makeup is Kurt Andrews as the Council President's designee. And the ordinance reads that, that's a designation that happens at the front end of the term, if you recognize, it's on, it doesn't change during the year. Uh, City Manager, uh, Bill is on as a council member, Peter Crabbe is a member of the public, and Rick Carey of Two Rivers Hotel Group slash cobblestone as lodging representative. So, there are, at most, two council members, one of them being the President, if the President wants to be on, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, yep. Does anyone else want to be on it?
When does it begin?
Since as needed.
It's been pretty flexible, as needed, I can say it's typically in the morning, weekday mornings, but it's kind of moved around the calendar. Sometimes because they want to be jointly with the Explore Two Rivers Not-for-Profit Board.
Well, if you need another councilman, I, I volunteer because I've been on before and.
Bill, you want to stand it?
Sure.
Yeah. So then there'd be a total, total six members then?
Yeah, good.
No. So it'd be five, right?
You represent five, so.
Well, Bill stays.
Well, you can designate him.
Yeah.
Yeah, designate Bill to go.
You could, yeah, that would, um, Kurt.
Oh.
Kurt is a designee, so.
Gotcha.
Which does not get rid of that.
Sure, right. So I could, if Kurt wants to keep doing it, we can just keep him as the designee and then just have Bill continue to go.
I have not asked Kurt Andrews about that, but yes, he probably would.
I was saying, so all, some things different, I'm open to anything.
So that scenario, the council representative would stay as.
As Bill's right now. Yep, yeah, we'll see, yes, yes.
Well, Mark's on the go, yeah.
I could still attend, I, when I order a D, I don't need to be officious.
Well, no, I'm saying instead of Kurt, because you would be on council, because it's technically two council positions. Yes, sure. So yeah, if you want to, Mark.
It's the President's call.
Right.
But I think Kurt adds a lot of value to it, because, but if you want a council second, it's mandatory, I want, I volunteer.
The two additions, we need members and six, it's four members in the public.
The other thing I have not remembered here is Peter's term, I've already assigned one here.
Says term.
Term one year.
Yeah, so. The council member, e- either Mr. Andrews could be replaced as Council President, as the, uh, Council President's discretion. Or, uh, a council member could take Mr. Crabbe's place, because they are one-year terms. Probably wouldn't want, wouldn't want to replace Rick Carey because he's filling.
For the, yeah, for the lodging, yep. Okay, um. So Mark, you want to go on?
It sounds as if Peter Crabbe's position could be council or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so we could have Mark be on, you could just.
Council. We could just bump that as his.
Okay.
I think Peter adds a lot of value to it, tell us. Uh, what type?
Well, Greg was talking.
I'm saying that we legally need another one.
Well, this term, it's a one-term term, so he could be replaced.
So.
Just for some history, especially with the councils, it seems like the city's plan is a little close to its best for council members and city manager. That's frankly because of some of the history that we've heard here, the man-to-man issues around the M A B C B and trying to get into it very, because their structure is such that it's primarily mayor and council members.
Which is the reason why council president or designee was put in there, because at the current time, Kurt was serving on that board when we were going through that.
All right.
And therefore, I felt at that time that it was best that he continues versus having someone like me just step in to try to figure it out and apply when we were going through some pretty serious stuff. That's how it became, that's how we put in the ordinance, the designee in the first place. Mark, you were on there too, though, you, because you were on the M A B C B, right?
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with all the background that he has thrown.
A little complicated.
Yeah, I think the position Mark held was probably more Peter Crabbe ended up in, because he's from, converted that one to a citizen.
Right.
That's my right election.
You're right, Peter Crabbe was me, Kurt, and Mark.
Yeah.
Then you added, well, and Jim.
Right, Jim Van Leeuwen until last year, this time, maybe two years ago, was the lodging representative. He remains an officer of the M A B C B to this time.
Oh, got you. So, Mark, if you want on, we can move Peter off.
Well, I hate to kick him off, because again, he, he represents one of the most important tourist sites in the city. I'm saying we need to have another one.
No, he's not on the, he can go on the board, right? Well, I don't, board's full right now, I'm talking about Explorer's River.
Explorer, uh.
That has one tour.
Actually, there were two venues, he's on the Explorer.
So he could go to Explorer, River.
Okay, that's, I'm willing to volunteer.
Yeah, if you want to volunteer for it, yeah, we can do that.
Maybe a lot of.
Sure, it's on there. Yep. And those are suited to the image. Anytime's gonna look bad. We don't nominate those people.
Okay. So Mark will go on the Room Tax Commission with Bill. And I'll keep Kurt. And Greg and Rick, and Peter will take off, but he'd be a good candidate for.
I will see, I love the possibility of, of Explorer's Rivers. Now, Peter's been a good addition, but it's, unless you change the ordinance, it's limited to five people.
Sure, right, yep. Okay, uh, Explorer's Rivers Board Directors, we don't do that. And Rivers Main Street, that is currently Darla.
Love to stay on that.
And Darla would like to stay on that.
Put a lot of time into it, and things are starting to happen.
Unless someone else wants to. Someone else, okay, that's Darla's, um.
About branding and marketing, is that discontinued?
That's discontinued, that was meant to be an at-law, which I'm worried. And so, our classrooms.
Got you. So is that everything?
That should.
Right.
Yep.
Everyone okay with that? Change your minds?
Thank you.
Okay. On to the consideration of proposed services agreement with co-parent condominium associations. Recommended action is authorized, motion to authorize the City Manager and City Court to sign an agreement on behalf of the city.
Yeah, just, I get it for a quick background, but come with council members, now, the, the, each of condo developments in Two Rivers was developed with private utilities. Just because you have condominiums doesn't mean the streets and utilities have to be private, but that's, that's how it worked out with the three planned unit developments, which is a zoning term. Which are condos, which is on their own, um, they all have private utilities, that includes Blue Aaron, which I think was our first P U D slash condo with private utilities. That also includes Mahogany Run, right across from the P Drive from Blue Aaron. It includes Washington Heights, the old high school site, and Riverside Condos up on River Street, about ten hundred yards. But those developments for various reasons, notably to, I think, to offer the developer some cost advantages. Were, first of all, planning and development, so from a zoning standpoint, were the sort of setback requirements, it would buy a single family or two-family homes. They can sit closer, the setback on the street could be less, you get more development per, per acre or per infrastructure dollar. And also, uh, the streets or drive, or drive, private drives are narrower and well perfectly serviceable, are held to the same standards as city streets. And the, but the deal, term I would choose to use, the deal going forward was, those would always be private responsibility for the streets and utility. The city did several years ago, agree on a, on a routine basis to do flushing of water mains and the flushing for cleaning, clearing of sanitary sewer mains. And responding to blockages of those private mains, uh, on a routine basis, before each of the condo associations, if they entered into an agreement that basically helped the city harness, address our concerns. The rationale there being, we, we, the city weren't taking over ownership of the infrastructure, nor the need to, nor the responsibility to fix it if it wore out or broke. But those folks do pay water and sewer bills, just like everybody else, and flushing mains and cleaning sewer lines are part of the other services that the city provides, based on the water and sewer bill. Agreements were entered into only because I created the date, so it's back around ninety-nine or so, with Rivers Edge, with Mahogany Run, and then with Washington Heights when it's built. Correct, the term around that, we do, we do service those as far as flushing water and sewer mains. Last summer, the Blue Aaron Board in August came, kind of the city council board, session in the spring, and said, well, remember, there are other services, we don't understand. What we hear often, we don't understand why we don't provide services, we pay high taxes, our homes are bad and pretty high. Council's action, the resolutions in your packets, was to say, there are certain limited, uh, services that the city is willing to provide to the association. Page on left, I don't have your packet. And it talks about flushing of private water mains, flushing of private sanitary sewers, emergency clearing, blocking private sewers. And the one that, uh. Is added here, and I believe the council would take the improvement for under. The city said here, we potentially would do it for other condo associations, is leaf collection from a lot of sites, for private roadways. What's that paid by? Your environmental fee on the utility bill, everybody pays that. So the rationale there is that the city is willing to extend, leaf not let collection, that's a reason, in paragraph two, a leaf collection along the private streets. And we were directed, I'm sorry, it was in September, after the meeting in August, to prepare a draft agreement. We met with Blue Aaron Board of Matt, the city engineer and I, met with them all one, we worked up a draft agreement that went to Blue Aaron folks in early December. They got back to us in February, and then we had in early April to go over that. They requested two changes. Uh, number one, I would just term cleaning up the language, and that's in paragraph number three of the document attached, starting on page thirteen. Previously, it said, the city would be responsible for the maintenance of the lift station. Uh, maintenance shall not include the operational costs and capital costs, but then it said the city will also be responsible for operational and capital costs. So, to, to their point, we said, well, that is a little confusing, why don't we just say maintenance, operational, and capital costs? And we can speak to that a bit more as we look back, and on some of the source documents from the late nineties, when this development was proved. And, uh, the one other thing, which the city had not put in the other, the agreements with the other condo associations as a prerequisite for doing the cleaning of the. Uh, sanitary sewer collection system, was that it be televised, and the initial televising be at the association's expense. So that was new for the proposed agreement with Blue Aaron. I think it was smart, the intent was basically to say, if there are flaws or failures within the system, like a badly offset joint in a main. We want that documented, because that, again, replacing our major repairs to that system aren't our responsibility, it's just jettied from the plot. We did get pushback on that, and I did say that I could recommend to the council that, that initial televising could be the city's responsibility, that's, we can say yes or no on that, but. That way, we'd still have the documentation of where we, baseline, if you will, where we started working with, maintaining that system. That's something we don't have, we would be concerned, associations succeed, with at least an argument for the city to pick that up. I think we estimated that that's about four thousand dollars, probably, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't bring in a contractor just to do that. Wouldn't have a contractor mobilized here with video equipment, we'd plan to have to do that as well. So, those two changes to what we achieved here with the council earlier.
Could I, do other condominiums get this, um, camera coming down with their systems, is this a regular thing?
We didn't require it, and I don't believe you've ever televised. We haven't, to my knowledge, uh, televised any of the other three condominiums, private utilities. We have not.
But I mean, would.
The reason why I requested to have it put in is because this is our first condominium, uh, basically taking own, not quite ownership, but. Doing formal maintenance on this, I wanted to have that baseline. Uh, because soon as we go in there, we do something, well, now we broke it. And we wanted to have proof, the other developments, we did that cleaning from day one, so we have that historic knowledge. Uh, but not physical televising. We historically televise our sewers on a routine basis. Um, oh, once every ten years, we'll go through various perks in the city and televise, especially when construction is coming up. Just primarily, what's the condition of our sewers and how we plan for the future. But right now, we have no immediate plan to do the other condominiums.
Well, I'm not asking if you would reach them, I mean, these people are asking for a lot, and they never stop asking.
Yep.
And we made a mistake with them, and now we tell other condominiums, no, you can't have what they have. I mean, this is not, I keep forgetting. Televy, television.
They might ask too, why, why a contractor, because we have some basic televising capabilities with our backdoor chart, but honestly, it's not that good. It, it, yeah, our capabilities are rudimentary at best, a contractor will actually give us a report then, and will then have a paper document saying, this is the condition of the sewer. And we would do it for several areas throughout the city.
That, that makes some sense. Um, there, there's a lot of stuff, if you want to continue, or want me to. Talk at the end, I will.
I'll, I'll defer to the chair.
Keep going, Greg. No, no, you, but you'll get your stuff at the end, Bonnie. Or if it's, or if it comes up while he's talking.
My understanding was if the, if the other associations wanted to come back to this for new collection, we'd probably do that, but I'm not sure if they would, because. Instead of having your landscaper come in with, you know, the, the, the bag or containers or whatever on the back of their movers, cleaning everything up and getting it out of there. They're probably kind of putting it in piles along the street, like the rest of us deal with it. That's lovely, we get that in return for environmental beauty, but they also wallow in the neighborhood, so I don't know about it. It, with this group, it was a big deal, and we did say, well, in fairness, why?
That's because of that.
Was that?
It's because they don't want to spend any money.
Yeah, you got me.
I used to take care of their properties up here, yeah. The groundskeeper cleans all that stuff up.
Yeah.
And you're cutting grass, and just, he's with it, because there they make you, you can't fetch it at all, that's me bagged and taken off-site.
Ah.
All the grass cooking.
And we did point out to them, if you want to take it all to where your condo association. I mean, with the public street, have a ton of them up there. But I think that one was pretty clearly agreed on by council, I would call a lot of excuses. What's especially sticky on this one is the lift station, the city didn't accept the lift stations as basically the city's responsibility, other than to respond for maintenance, routine maintenance repair. In the other associations, I think they all have lift stations to some extent, two for sure, but, so. That, we're back on that, I guess, you know, on the video, I think the other option would be to talk to it at all. City's not paying for this association, isn't, it's probably a good idea, you know, that development's been there for twenty-plus years, usually pipes just sit there, ground, do their play, but. I have no idea if something hasn't shifted. The thought was we'd get that baseline.
Okay. You're talking about getting a baseline? If you, if you get in there and get a baseline, and then the, the one and done. Does that work out okay for you?
Yeah.
And then that way, I still don't get why you want that. Okay, so if we concede to all of these demands, what are they still doing as per their, you know, original agreement within the, the house, the.
How are they different from a typical, what a typical house?
Well, I mean, you know, as Bonnie, I totally get what you're saying, because I feel the same way. It's like buyer's remorse, it's like, oh, we knew what we were getting into, and now we don't like it, and so we want to get out of it, and it's like, I don't think it's fair.
Yeah, well, probably they have the stripes to show, it's, it's, too, um, I guess I would say, what are they still doing, but they're still private roads. And they're, they're responsible. And they're, they're responsible for snow removal ice control. We just have to do it.
And we care about the rest.
They're responsible for patching and resurfacing. We're not touching it.
Okay.
They are basically giving us permission to run our new frames down the streets and bring our sewer tract in there. They still, let's say, snow removal, they still do snow removal. If there were any components of the water or sewer systems that they have to replace, I can envision that the league, the-
Could be valves, could be deepwater main.
That's true. Sometimes valves get aggressive soils in some areas of the community. They still pay, and this is PSC rules, they still pay because it's a private water system. They pay public fire protection charges per, and then just like to view those on the water bill. And then they pay private fire protection duty dollars per connection at their private system to the public system. We couldn't change that here. If you wanted to, that's public service rules. But they have two connections that you're Lou Aaron brought out of the league. That's a hundred bucks a month for the association.
I don't know, because I just don't like, you know, if you go down that road and you, you say, "Okay, this is what we're going to do for you," and then the other, the other associations, I mean, it's just, you're setting precedents and I think that it's, then why didn't, why didn't they ever have the agreement to begin with?
The two bases, yeah. The two changes here are leaf collection and the video and proposing. This one specifically paid for it, just to make sure.
For just the baseline?
For just the baseline. After that, it would be the city's discretion. A lot of video, great. So we'd have the obligation.
Who's listening to this? It's ours?
Yeah, it's ours.
Yeah, we're not even playing the whole lot. We're maintaining our lift station and picking up leaves that they technically paid for on their, somebody bills anyway.
What about the station was mistaken in nineteen ninety-eight? I know it's two, I did two. That's literally two years ago.
But the, the lift station is, they were supposed to take care of it. Well, how do you say it's ours?
Yes. I mean, how, how do I get pressure to love?
Is it ours because we replaced, we made us?
It's, it's really not very well written in the source documents. It indicates, tell me out there how the, "All of the utilities, including water mains, sewer mains, are private with the exception of the lift station." And the city was to sign, the city was to accept the lift station, the city was to sign off, it was built to its spec. We can't find that the city ever either signed off or raised objections. But there was that paragraph of the language in front of the planning mission that the council had said, "Utilities are private except the lift station." Not too much of a stretch. We don't think, well, if they ain't private, they must be public.
So really not getting the whole lot?
They're getting leaf collection and I guess if we want that baseline, televising, we're paying for it. We initially tried to propose something.
Well, out of this contract, when I was on the utility, I remember, um, did he?
They paced here, spoke to it, yeah.
He very much regretted agreeing to that.
Yeah.
Because he didn't expect the expense to go as high as it did.
Yes.
And we can't, we can't replace it because we can't afford to go up to code of the way that the DNR wants us to. That's my understanding with the lift station.
Right. But we can't admire the force on it either. We, we agree to it.
No, you're not going to replace it. The point is we can't, well, without costing the city
This agreement's good for ten years.
I'm sorry.
This agreement's good for ten years.
We need some, that's a lot, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, what point are you on?
Ten years following signature, yeah. And then either party terminated without cost, with a hundred and twenty days' time or something. So I, yeah, our thought was, although there's some items that are worthy of council guidance, this could be our request is the reauthorization from the city manager in court to sign.
Do you have more questions, Bonnie?
Well, no, I'll go point by point. I'll enter, or are you finished?
I'm finished.
What?
I'm finished.
Oh, well, see, on number three, when it says, I requ, or, um, the city, wait, what did it say about, um, insurance, right? Well, here's what I wrote, but I now I don't know why I wrote it. "I request that it be noted that the city agreed," oh, huh, well, okay, maybe you don't want to do this. "Agreed, but it became so costly that the city also decided not to do it for any other condominium." I, I mean, really, we're kicking the other people in the face in a, in a way. I, I guess I feel that way. Other condominiums.
I guess I'll, I'll turn around, you're saying we should be damned by precedent. Which those other contractors would probably agree with.
Well, and then number five, um, what if they don't repair their thing? They said something about repairing it, but what if they don't? What, the association will be responsible for repairing all water mains and all that kind of thing. Are they really going to do it? I don't like, I don't know if I, I don't know. It's like I don't trust them.
Well, if they got a policy to provide.
But that's it.
Private system, we're saying it's not the city's, it's there.
Okay. And then, um, what do they mean by they give, number seven, the association gives to the city an easement, providing the city with access to the private roadways?
Basically.
Does that mean we can drive on their driveway?
Yep, the private roads and services, providing services. We need access, we have access to roads and six feet beyond.
You know, the thing is,
We will let it.
I, I went there tonight to see what it was, it's all black top. It all looks brand new. Those city trucks are going to keep that looking brand new. That's how I see it. And those dump trucks, they're even bigger than yours. You must be jealous, you know? But I just, um, then I just think they're going to come back and say, "You wrecked our road." Are we protected from that? Um, I don't know. Where are the leaves going to go? Just on the grass? There is no sidewalk. And they're not really a street, a curb.
They put the ground, the leaves on the edge of the pavement, so.
Okay.
You got there last year?
To have proof of insurance on here.
At the River's, uh, River View.
What?
I think they brought all the leaves up to the neighborhood.
Well, that's what they did, but I thought they, the last time they were here, I thought they didn't want to do that. They wanted you to have leaves picked up the way everybody in the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you have to drive on their little driveway?
Yep, yep. Just like our truck goes down our little driveway.
Yeah.
And I think what your concerns are are probably under eight. It's an indemnity, it's basically a whole term. If the services identified here and are provided by the city, the association for itself, its heirs, personal and legal representatives, successors on the signs, including any condominium owner's, waves and releases any kind of claims, damages, causes of actual liability or liabilities of any nature, should be nature, not nature, okay, whatsoever, known or unknown, against the city, its officers, et cetera, arising therefrom, related to, or arising from the provision of such services, except only such claims are for reckless, negligent, or intentional acts by the city. So I don't think driving down their roadways with our civic trucks would be considered negligent or reckless or intentionally damaging. So they are acknowledging, yeah, they're taking us off the hook for claims that arise out of provision of these services.
When they, they said they would take out insurance, can they, can we ask them to show us every year that they've done this? Are we, am I being kidding? I won't put this on the council. I know I'm being kidding, but maybe I'm right.
Everyone else makes someone show a certificate of insurance if that's required. So it's not, maybe it's common.
Okay.
If it's required, this doesn't, it says it's required.
I, and as the city attorney, but it's a little weird because nine refers to claims of the kind described in section eight, which are claims they're taking us off the hook for related to our provision of services under the program. I'd have to defer to Jack for some reason. If we're requiring coverage, I think we'd have the right to ask for proof of that coverage. But I don't think it's going to call up specific coverage for damage caused by the entity.
Unless it's negligent on our part.
Yeah.
Then we're liable for the coverage.
Yeah.
No issues.
If that's, if that's sticking to what, you know, the council, do his table, it's Jack, that could address it next Monday night. But I know he has reviewed this, or he reviewed his presses or. Other questions?
Craig, I, I'm assuming, because I wasn't here when it all started completely, but the objective of the association was to reduce the overall fee for the individual owners of the condominiums, right? And it doesn't sound like what we're providing is going to be that dramatic in terms of cost reduction fees. So I, I, I think-
I think that's a fair, I think they came and say, "We pay taxes like everybody else." With all respect, you know, forget what the, the deal was with the developer. Forget that we all purchased, knowing what covenants are there. We, yes, I think they were looking to be able to shift back over on the general property taxes or the city things they now pay for. The, it ended up being a pretty scarce, limited bundle of services that the council was wanting to create.
So to finish my question, have they communicated that to the individual owners that the overall objective of large reduction? Is it going to happen? Is it a very slim fulfillment that we're providing for them?
I can only tell you that the representatives, the board, and we not asked a question about how they're talking. It is my understanding slash assumption that they have not done any of the maintenance because they haven't budgeted for it. And as such, it actually started with some fire protection issues on the watering side, that this whole thing came around and then dealing with some sanitary backups of the sanitary lift station that we've all known that they haven't been maintaining their system. So it's basically, hey, we need to maintain it. Oh, we didn't budget anything for it. City, we pay taxes. You take on these responsibilities. So don't have that officially, but that's kind of, if you place all the cards on the table, that's what it's looking like.
With that on the table, all the cards, then do the residents know that they're not going to expect the reduction? Because they weren't paying for it, budgeting for it anyway? That's what, that's my question to ask is.
You're never going to make them happy. If that's what you're asking.
I just want to make sure we communicate.
The staff, we've interacted with people that have come representing the associations and like them before. Correct, yeah. I, I really don't want to go over that. I can't hold it. I can say though, I mean, especially from Lou Aaron, I'm not criticizing Lou Aaron. There's been a drumbeat through the years. We pay, you know, they're, it's a beautiful development. Their properties have very nice market values. You pay your property taxes based on the market value. And I, I know they, I've been told that it's kind of rude and they don't appreciate it, but I can come back to, the deal is a deal, it's a deal. And the city gave Jeffrey Chak, the developer at the time, permission to develop Lou Aaron and the man who it was developed with clear understanding of the roadways and the utility infrastructure, except for the lift station. We're going to be private. And I don't know, but the city way you can get people that pay taxes and vote and have all the same rights as everybody else in the community, not to try. They've tried. Council, I think wisely has said, you know, what, what are you, what are you doing for the general taxpayer? If a, a deal is a deal, but then you turn around and say, "Oh, but we're going to pay for it with general taxpayer or general rate payer line." But in this instance, the things we're talking about adding to the limited scope of city services there are things that they're paying for just like everybody else. Leaf collection and jetting, sewers, flushing the mains. I know Bonnie and I've times, I think I'm paraphrasing, you've said, "It's almost enough to make you not want to approve any more developments. It's private." Well, that's true, but you know, it's kind of like one rule of human nature. People figure they can save some money, they're going to pursue it. You know, just down the road, you know, the preserve at the heart, like Houseley Development on Mead Avenue. Those are private streets with private utilities. Because there is an economy that comes with that. And presumably that, that's, the developer should have benefited that first generation of ours because they allowed our housing to be built at a lower price point. Don't ask me to prove that, but that's, that's what economics would tell you. That's our, that's our field.
I got a question. They're not budgeting?
Okay, it's, it's on that way now.
Okay, so what happens five years from now? Then they have a catastrophic issue, but they haven't budgeted anything to address it? And then they come back to us again. I mean, you can't force them to budget for it, but.
Then they have to go over.
Okay, we're going to see it firm.
I don't, I don't want to speculate.
I, I just want to make sure we're just, you know, if, if this is it.
I don't think we would have any obligation. If that's the case, I'm not going to say this first.
Any other questions for Greg or Matt? Otherwise, we'll round this up with a motion for something. The motion that they're asking for is to authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Is there a motion for that or something different, but some of those?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do we have a second? Adam will second it. Thank you, Adam. Any more discussion?
I just want to point out in case you hear back, because we sat down in early April. It was my understanding that that would be reduced, which we are, is a concern that we change. I haven't, I think this is responsive. I haven't shipped it off to Lou Aaron group again. I wanted to stop here first and get your approval. But I believe this is fully responsive to our big questions. And if there's any more issues that they want to raise, they'll be back here talking to you all in your case. So we are saying that we do have clear cut language that holds us harmless from anything our trucks could do to their roadway. That, that's why, you know, that we're fulfilling our obligations under this agreement. We have to, and they've given us an excuse to use their roadway and more of that and six feet beyond. We're identified to help harm the substers, or was it negligence or intentional acts? I don't think. You know, the leaf truck rolling down the street with the back door truck rolling down the street is harmful to our services. Typically, we see that we're negligent or were act, to trust me.
I just want to make sure, you know, what bothers, is bothering me so much, in their first contract that I read, they, the first one, even the first people that moved in, they didn't budget any money towards their lift station or toward those things. You know, they should have been budgeting just for checkups. And I just, I don't know.
Well, I think that's for us to decide though.
I can't see.
We don't go to individual homeowners and make them budget and inspect their.
No, but they're saying they're coming because they can't afford it and.
I don't know if that's turning scope. I'd be real careful of that, yeah. I, I, yeah, I wouldn't speculate. I mean, they, as I understand it, they're common areas, which you can just go to, gross exterior. I, nothing, nothing on the surface, I think that the development is beautifully. I, nothing, nothing on the surface. I think that the development is beautifully intended. I can, I want to presume to speak as I know the services they're at.
I think they just want to have services done that they're paying for. And I think that's what they came to us originally talking about this. We pay this in taxes, please do these things for us.
Yeah.
Well, it's not like a lease for, well.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Amanda.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Doug Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tepetri.
Aye.
Bonnie Shumitos.
No.
Scott Sacken, sir.
Aye.
Okay, most care. Thank you for that. Uh, see consideration amendments to city personnel policy manual.
You have a memo and a copy of our full policy manual in practice, which were prepared by Amanda. These are, okay, popular additions, but most of these were reviewed with personnel finance committee back in January. Um, you know, a few things happened, you know, Amanda's up for an award in the last, oh, and for several weeks. We kind of got distracted and still are, are acting as distractors this way. But the logic move that, we had other fault instances, so here we are. Some of these are fairly minor, some are fairly major, some are in front of me. And it'll be happy more.
Um, so the memo is just kind of outlining the changes that are made in starting with three point O two of one, of limited types. Um, the parts and wreck director Mike Mathis came to me and due to them relying heavily on seasonal and part-time staff over there. The way our current policy was written said that anybody um, working over a thousand hours was allowed to get benefits.
Pro rated.
Pro rated benefits.
Yep.
Um, so what we did is we made a separate category for the parks and rent staff. That way they can use that staff up to the eleven ninety-nine. Um, and it is that number that reports we hit twelve hundred, we have to provide WRS. So it's a lot of high school kids and college kids that this affects. There's no, it doesn't affect anything of our current part-time staff, um, and in any other departments, um, and parks and rent currently does not have any part-time staff that gets benefits. So this is just a lot of more flexibility during the summer months and the opposite of.
There are departments, you can talk, like on library, for example, where year-round part-time staff are a huge amount of service delivery, the library, these prorated time off benefits. Evidence is a very important part of the benefit package. So this is just a kind of a part of the bureaucracy and it's mostly seasonal staff, right?
Yeah, so.
Part-time slash seasonal.
It's really what it comes down to is that a lot of the building tenants that help out year-round want to work more hours comes out and help out parks and rent and just because of the limit of the thousand hours, they're not able to work that, so it give them more opportunities to work an extra.
Almost. And you can appreciate, we really strive for part-timers to stay below that WRS threshold because that adds six and a half, six point nine percent, it's not fair now, to the city's cost. It also means six point nine percent of their paycheck. A lot of part-timers have that. We still have a, the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare threshold, which I don't remember, that's higher, yeah. Because that's a big cost, so all of a sudden they're responsible for health insurance. This, this proposal, the changes itself are posed by city policy, generally it's not good. To amend this point, it's what we find to address part-time needs.
Um, so six point O three overtime. Um, so just, um, a lot of these certifications have come from our management staff, just making sure that it's listed there. Um, one of it is when someone is called in multiple times within a two-hour period. They still only get paid for that two-hour initial call. So if someone would get called in, he may go and fix something for fifteen minutes, go home. And if not, this later would call back, it's still only that two-hour call in. Okay. Um, the other part of this is the comp time. So that's kind of where this started out. With WRS requirements, if we would pay out comp time, um, so the employee doesn't use it. We have to go back and report that comp time earned to the proper years. So say someone earns comp time in twenty seventeen and we pay it out here in twenty twenty-four. We have to amend their twenty seventeen, um, annual report to adjust that because technically they made that then. So with that, they would also have, we have to adjust it with the wage. Um, so we look back at the wage at that time and accurately report it based on that. Right now, we allow it to be carried over. And we're looking to not allow the carryover of it just because of that. And along with that, the city and employee would be in charge of paying interest rates on it.
Okay, WRS looks back and says, okay, for each of the years in question, what was the rate of return for our core fund? Some years it, some years it has double-digit pay in the statute. We were not aware of this requirement. Our practices have deviated from this requirement. But the statute makes clear that the employee share can be charged to the employee. So that, when, when would you, when did you run that comp time? Oh, five years ago, well, we go back to the rate of pay, it was possible then. But what have been, what have the interest earnings been on the WRS fund in the ensuing years? So it's a mess. Our, our comp time practice is legal in terms of the federal Fair Labor Standards Act. We're, sorry, I can't remember it, caps, we allow under twenty hours.
Two hundred.
Two forty, I'm sorry, let's be, at times a half becomes two forty. For police, it's longer. In the contract, it's eighty hours or one twenty.
Four.
Yeah. Fire, market, the unit of police, somebody, it's a matter of practice, you're not in comp time, it's all paid overtime.
Um, so with that, what we're proposing is um, eventually get down to an employee's allowed a maximum of eighty comp hours in their bank um, at a time. So if they make those eighty hours in February, use some of it for vacations, they can go back up to that eight. So it's not that they, they just can't have more than that in there. Um, and then at the end of every year, either they use it or they get paid out for it. Because that way it's accurately recorded with WRS and the employee isn't paying any type of fees and interest rates and the employee aren't isn't. Um, so with that, in appendix B, um, it's a new appendix of the policy manual. It outlines kind of how we're going to get to that point. Uh, since our, right now employees are allowed to do hundred and forty hours, um, we are asking for employees by January one of twenty twenty-five to get that balance down to a hundred and sixty hours. Um, and then any comp time earned this year would go into a new comp time bank. So we can keep track, send any, anything in the new comp time bank, it's paid out at the end of the year like always. But the old past comp time bank is what these, um, thresholds are going to go down. So then in January first of twenty twenty-six, um, it will be eighty hours they have to have that act. Um, and then as of January first of twenty twenty-seven, um, there cannot be anything left in that old comp time bank. That make sense?
Looking to phase it out, it's giving people time to take it if they want to, dog, that's their vacation. Go ahead.
Because if they take the time, it's not an issue. It's when we pay it out is where it becomes the issue. So they can earn it in twenty seventeen and take it this year and ultimately use it at like the current rate of pay when they earn it at an earlier rate of pay. But, um, it's the problems when we pay out that amount.
So for the next, for this year and two more years, employees currently have comp time. May very well have, there'll be two boxes on their check stuff, one for comp time old and one for comp time new. Comp time new is what you can get up as high as eighty, you want them to cut it down to a year. And if we provide them here, I don't know whether they're basically December, you can't earn comp time, it's overtime.
I don't know that.
We talked about it.
This dissipation of their accumulated comp time, is it gonna cause any staffing problems throughout our departments? I mean, in terms of being forced to take comp time, but we have the ability to cover the personnel needed.
It's still up to the department that requires time off based on services in the department.
Okay. Uh, will, will the department head then be able to manage through this to meet those new goals of comp time available in the future days?
I hope so.
Okay.
And there's.
If we're at full staff, my best, and aren't facing some extraordinary circumstance, I would think so.
Okay.
But we've gotta get away from this.
I, I understand.
And there is, what is it, like, I think twenty-three employees overall that even have comp time things. And then I think nine of them are at the back, so it's not like it's a large amount of employees.
That's kind of really public works and utilities. Police, we've got a, we've got a, we just added just in twenty-ten, I think, added comp time to the contract with up to a hundred and twenty hours to crew. That we'd have to negotiate out. I've already talked to our union rep. He has other bargaining units, there is, got the same situation, but they are, it would be subject to part.
Speaking to Mark's point, it's actually more of a liability to your, your staffing. I would say that it is, you know, the opposite. Cause you have more ample time for people to take off.
I guess the concern was our department's gotta be, they've got people really trying to take their comp time. In addition to their vacation time, you still have services to provide.
Right, right.
And really their employee can still opt to take overtime instead of comp time at all, so.
And I, I just go back to Greg's point is that comp time is the best thing we improve because you have all those other means to do so. So, um, we don't have to give comp time to anyone. As long as they're reimbursed at some point.
Yeah, I'd, I'd argue in a lot of cases, it's been, it's gonna be safer for the city. It also, it forces, not, not allowing carryover ultimately forces you to deal with your overtime process in real time and current dollars.
With this new policy, we should then also take a look at when we're allowing comp time. Uh, parts and wreck went in, did their floors, I think on Easter. So now if they choose not to take the comp time, we're paying them time and a half to do something on Sunday that they did during the week. They're using their comp time. Is what I was told. I, I don't know what your decision to do on Sunday.
I know I called you on it when I thought of it.
I don't, but I do something you had a quote for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but as to the decision on using comp time.
Right, but if we're not gonna, if we're gonna force them to have it paid out at the end of the year, we're technically paying overtime based on our policy, which means it's not gonna be a good practice to use that comp time to do a floor that's not in need of repair. We don't need comp time for something like that.
I'll. I'll, I'll defer to the department legislature on that. I don't, I can't sit here and say that I know for certain it's forever wrong decision. Cause even if it's comp time, it's compensated at time and a half. You're given an hour and a half off for each hour of each day. I, I thought they did it on Sunday in part to minimize program impacts and that, but I.
But, but we can pick it up. So I mean, if we're paying them normally, they're just taking an extra, extra time off, it's not part of their budget necessarily.
Right, doesn't have a budget effect.
Correct, this would have a budget.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
So that should really be addressed. So when we're using comp time, we should have some sort of outspoken note as well that any amount of comp time at any point that you have, you can request it at the pay. So you can't regret that. Sure, that, that's already what you're saying, but in a way, it's already what you're saying. Cause I brush that as well, uh, and can't regret that, like if somebody has, whether it's eight, up to the eighty, at any point they can request that.
To the extent they use it, it's much easier to save, as you said. But when they don't, it's cost the city.
But right now.
Then we were technically in the hole last year.
But right now, it's also costing the city money because somebody in twenty seventeen might have that a worker making twenty dollars an hour, received several promotions, that is now making thirty dollars an hour. Now their comp time's being paid over thirty dollars an hour if they're taking this year. Which.
I think you could go back to that part a lot.
Yeah. Pretty crazy that it's on the books for that long.
Yeah, but it's that liability that we've always talked about, where she has, you know, I try to do the budget right down to the penny when I come before personal finance, but like you'd never really know who's gonna accumulate and max out. And take a year like this, that's kind of not here, that's a huge liability. We don't know who's gonna max out, who's gonna pay out or in that year. You know, just looking at some of those, you're, you're talking fiber and the person you could be on the hook for it, you don't really plan for those things. I figured I'd have a crush on each year. You know, like I had those maybe two or three typical people that might max out and, and draw that out in a year. But it's always liability because you don't want who's gonna be able to do that.
Anything further on comp time? Plunge on. It's, that's a big area issue.
Six point O nine is just rephrase from working remotely, or so from working from home to working remotely.
So inherent right to that, just a lot of secret, app, uh, which helps the department head, the city didn't, or we didn't do much.
Um, six point one four step-up pay was added. Um, this practice is currently happening in our departments. But it would allow the department head to use discretion. Um, I know right now sometimes it's used where if you're doing a higher classification of a job for four hours, you get paid that rate for four hours. In this way, the department head would have, um, authority over that as someone that already completed another person's full job applications. Um, so if someone's doing it for an extended period of time, obviously that would be up to the department head. Um, it's a lot tougher.
Pre-act ten days. It's like two hours outside of my class.
Uh, it's one of the worst and six hours.
Six, okay. But again, not that way. Well, geez. You need to be available for that, but you're not really using those additional skills. We don't wanna be unfair people, but.
It's very much union language that kind of just stuck around. Um, six point one five standby has also been added. Um, just kind of saying that a person on standby would receive the additional compensation. I know each department has their own set of law for that. Um, and then just if a department has a standby policy, that they follow that policy.
And that's, that's a whole, I mean, that used to be governed by the contracts. I will say our standby provisions are hugely beneficial because we pay someone a stipend for a week at a time, and you can definitely, you can use two, when they're on standby, but that means it's the sewage back out of your basement or lines down the road, by god, there's somebody reasonable response time to personal, and it's about.
Um, eight point O two rephrase from personal holidays, just personal days. Um, and then just rephrasing in there that it has to be used in eight-hour increments, so not that it's straight out like hour by hour through years, for the year. Um, vacation, uh, we add a language, um, if an employee would leave within the first twelve months. Fortunately, you have an increase in that. Um, and so it require them to, your, not always vacation is prorated, but if they use over that allotted amount, it would have them reimburse the city at the last paycheck that they received. Um, sick leave. Uh, so we added language that when the sick leave can be used. Um, so we added that sick leave may be used, um, for an ill child, but not to provide childcare for a healthy child. So sick leave cannot be used for daycare purposes.
We have one department where that's an ongoing area. No, it's not there for, your baby's gonna be on the other side of your child, if that's unfortunate, doesn't mean there hasn't been a lot of lead, that exists.
Um, funeral leave.
And that's one department that's reinforced to collect department. And it's not, well, it's here. More than maybe.
Um, funeral leave, um, under spouse, significant other, and partner were added to that language. Um, and then, um, also, um, after conversation between Greg and I, um, there's a lot of people that could be very close to an aunt or uncle that was raised by an aunt or uncle, so we said up to one day of pay for an aunt uncle or a cousin for that.
And if there are circumstances we didn't anticipate, it doesn't vest that authority to grant people leave beyond what's stated here. I accept, uh, city manager with approval from the city council.
Yeah, we did add that language in there as well. Um, ten point oh one for discipline. Um, so I guess at some point, um, when this was being revised, it kind of a layout of what misconduct can be was lost, um, so it was added back in here of just some examples of what um, conduct might result in discipline. Chapter fourteen was a mess. Um, it is the F M L A policy, so everything in there is listed based on state federal requirements. Um, the way it was written, it was all just one big chunk, um, so it was broken down to outline, um, each section, so if an employee is simply looking for, um, your pay during F M L A, you can easily find that portion of it instead of reading several pages of just words together. And then just the upcoming speed that was added for comp time.
And they should have a more due action payroll.
Correct.
Probably a sure people are better. So, kind of last, if we brought, again, from the ninety percent of this to the personal finance committee, that would ask for council approval of the various seventy-six percent.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the amendment, as recommended by personnel and finance command. It should be made by Tim, second by. I shall say Janet first. Uh, we have no other discussion. Yes, Adam.
I will not vote in favor of this because we should have more standards on comp time.
More standards.
Uh, when we're using comp time. Again, with being in, our budget was negative this year. Um, it would be a problem.
And that's something that the issue of address, and add another section to it, but I think right now we're trying to get focused on.
I don't dispute that, we have deficits, especially your forty thousand dollars on a lot of point two million dollar budget. Deficits are never good, whatever they are, I think that comes as a directive within the management team to, to the best of their ability, address this cost. I'm not sure, listen, it could be a policy that seeks to govern, we can use comp time, or we can use overtime, because really, analogous especially without committing to paying it out. I, I think that goes with the same marching workers that talk to the departments generally. I hear what you're saying.
Is there a projection, a future budget, I mean, that's two percent, that's a pretty small error, but is there a projection where you see it to be bigger than two percent of this current previously, or?
What, what'd you say?
It's a two percent error of the forty thousand on the two million dollar budget. Is there, you see a problem that you're concerned is bigger than?
Eleven million? It's eleven million dollar, yeah.
What?
It's an eleven million dollar budget.
Well, you see it to be, where specifically, you see the problem being at?
Well, the fact that we're under budget and now we can't carry that over for multiple years, it's gotta get paid out in the same year, so that could increase that budget by even more. No budget's ever good. No deficit in a budget's good, ever. Wherever, we don't, we don't go and, we don't have deficits. Most companies don't, that's how, that's how you find yourself in trouble.
Could I ask, can we pass this? But, ask the, but, I mean, the part that covers comp time later after some discussions about it, if there's ways, does that make sense to you? No?
I think she's trying to say to scratch out the comp time part of this and pass the rest.
But talk about it later, I mean, talk.
I think if the council has concerns about the expense of comp time or overtime percentage, that's, that's a fine discussion to have. I don't think that should impact this policy one way or the other, that's what we're really gonna be saying. There's some overall limits and we want to get rid of that, that accrued bank. I, I guess I'm doing two different things. Maybe it assures us to get back and have that discussion, but I, that's kind of like, we don't have council guidelines right now with policy, when, when overtime is used as when in the judgment of the department heads, generally here in charge of these budgets. There's a service need, and it's, and I'm not being disrespectful, but it is different than this, it's because sometimes stuff hits the fan. And ambulances need to roll, police overtime is needed, making snowpods need to get out, and, you know, it doesn't.
But that's not what all this budget is used for, Greg.
I know, and we also thought.
Sure, you can't just bring up the highlights and.
Yeah, and I can honestly, I don't know, I don't know.
You're bringing up the day ones that are gonna hit people by the heart, you know.
Right, I don't know about that.
And I'm not even deciding which the gym floor.
I saw there, there's other overtime.
Yeah.
That's over budget.
Correct. And we review the overtime at three, about every month, or some would need personal finance.
Is this amendment that we're voting on for comp time, is that gonna clean up just a lot of the problem?
So the problem we're talking on it right now.
Yeah, the problem that we are addressing right now is the payout issue and trying to allow employees as much time in this year to use the and get it down to that one sixty before January one. Fortunately, we're trying to bring this back in January, but.
Right.
But Adam, your, your issue is you don't like the way we've been doing it, using the floor as an example for Easter Sunday. You want to be able to fix that so it can be better managed, is that your problem?
We're forcing us to pay that out at the end of every year now.
Right, right.
Which they could have also paid it out, but now it's mandatory that people can pay it out.
All right, so to get us out of the problem, and, and your concern is how, what jobs are doing, is it paid out, is that the concern?
Are all the jobs necessary to be done for comp time slash overtime, correct?
Or could it be done during?
Could it be done during the normal work week, as opposed to other things that can wait, so we don't have this? Or are people just taking comp time in order to have vacation time?
Yeah, but as far as the scheduling and all that, I mean, there's probably nothing to the madness, and it's the the boss's discretion. If you had a really good reason for having it on one day, you know, you can't micromanage everybody, and this seems like it's not something that happens a lot.
It's not necessarily micromanaging, it's managing a budget overall.
I know, but these guys, you have to, you have to let them fly with this, I mean, they're, they're using their best judgment. And I, you know, we've already had a, can we just go around this?
If there's no more discussion?
Are we trying to talk here?
Any more discussions?
Don't ask me, just. I think if there's, and maybe personal finances where that happens, if there's, I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about to what extent do we use overtime or comp time. And you're right, it's good, it's, it's a definite, that our comp time's gonna cost us more budget than it has. It was kind of, it seemed kind of benign, as they are getting carried from year to year, now we're saying, no, once that whole bank, those old banks are wiped out, then, which could have caused some budgetary impact at least this year or the next two years. But even after that, we're gonna end up with a lump sum in January, or excuse me, December gets paid out, so that that's legit, when I come, I'm, I'm not questioning how's Greg or interested in saying, okay, why are we using overtime, when are we using it? I don't think anything in our documentation policy ever states that, because it's, that's not what this policy's about, it's about pulling up what we have. So I'd be happy to talk about that, that personal finance with, um, Adam and Bonnie and Marcus, can you?
Anything else? Nothing else? We're all covered.
Darla Leplick.
Aye.
Mark Whitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby from Villa Claire.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Tommy Chimalonis.
Aye.
Scott Steppmutter.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
No.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, D, consider terms for amendment to purchase agreement with the Why Not LLC for the property at twenty twenty-three Washington Street.
Hold on just a second. I'm gonna steal an op count. Okay, and this is one I'm really just back, um, looking for clarification on this, I think I'm looking for final solutions. Council, at, at the work session at the end of February, had a discussion with Barry and Gina Crone from Why Not LLC about the agreement that they had entered into with the city when they purchased in twenty twenty-two the old Unimark property at twenty twenty-three Washington Street. Now, just to recap quickly for the new council members, that old Unimark had been taxed only for almost ten years. The county can take property for back, they go to court and take property for back taxes when they're more than three years old. But managed what county historically has, they don't have to, and the county's, I think it's fair to say, been leery of taking title to properties where there had been environmental issues. It's an old gas station, there had been leaking underground storage tanks that are off record, they will remove, the D N R approved a site closure with some restrictions, which included if you ever dig down, ask about six feet and get into contaminated soils, they've got to be dealt with, they've got to dispose of that property. Seeing that as a priority redevelopment property that wasn't doing the community any favors, sitting vacant on the main street, uh, this the city council authorized an approach, the county entered into a six, section sixty-five one oh three, I think it is. Uh, agreement, I'm sorry, seventy-five, one oh six, agreement with D N R, basically which, which affirmed the city's local governmental unit exemption or L T U exemption, acquiring that tax on the property. We then turned around and made it available for redevelopment, we had a purchase contract with one party who decided that they didn't want to pursue it, so we refunded their money. Uh, they hadn't bought it, they, they had secured the right, I'm sorry, so we found that law through this agreement. Then, uh, let it be known, the city would entertain offers to sell the property pretty recently, but tied into someone making a commitment to redevelopment and development, no till they're free, why not, I think that show was. You can buy it for ten thousand dollars, but we want to see a modified redevelopment plan, which was planned, came back to apply commission and council to redevelop the existing building, fix it up for retail, and by a date certain, we want you to spend this hundred thousand dollars in that redevelopment. Seemed like pretty reasonable and modest number at the time, and to the extent you would, you fall short of that documented expense. Uh, the city would receive the difference, so if somebody completes a renovation, could only show eighty thousand dollars in cost, the city would give an additional twenty thousand dollar payment. Well, that sounded lovely, but as things went forward, the Why Not folks, same folks that developed the city brewing other business interests in the area, uh, first of all, said, well, we could use an extension, we're running into some structural problems, we're gonna have to tear down part of the building and, uh, probably keep the rest. Then that grew to their determination of the whole building being removed now. Then, which, by the way, then triggered the for twenty-foot rear yard setback, because that was an existing non-conforming building with a rear wall, or near side of the property line, tear it down, you gotta comply with code. Um, then they, all this is Barry and Gina Crone, we're here from Why Not, I mean, February reported they ran into at least a partial base on under the old building. So they frankly are not intent to exploit to redevelop the property at this point. And as I understood, we staff understood the council's uh, consensus at that meeting in February, because it didn't get a vote, um, the, the city would consider uh, so the second page, giving the current owners up to an additional twelve months, I'm curious, it's saved to the end of May twenty twenty-five, people who are here now to either sell the property or redevelop it for themselves. If they sold it for fifty thousand dollars or less, because they, they did represent, we've got about fifty thousand in eligible costs invested in what's in the building or in planning or in demolishing. Uh, if sold for fifty thousand or less, Why Not can keep a hundred percent sale proceeds or further obligations to the city. If the property is sold for more than fifty thousand, then the proceeds would be split, the proceeds in excess of fifty thousand would be split with two dollars to the city for every one dollar, and why not? And then I was a little unclear on this from the minutes, but the city would have the right to buy the property back if you wish, for ten thousand dollars, which is what Why Not paid for it to begin with. So I expressed that here as thinking it would make more sense to say, well, if you've got twelve months to sell or rework, change mind, or redevelop, develop the property on your then at the end of the twelve-month period, there'd be some period, two months, three months, where the city give, the city wanted it back. Could take it back, but could not be bought, maybe to take it back. But I wanted to revisit that discussion, and I know all these, uh, who are here, I may be on track, I'm not, Adam may, if you recognize himself.
I thought at the end of twelve months, we would buy it back.
And that.
That's what I thought.
And the needs to be determined that way.
Talked about when Gina was there, that, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then I also thought, maybe this wasn't in the minutes, but I also thought that even if they sold it that they would still have to have some investment into it and not just keep it like a parking lot. Uh, we had talked about that too, not that someone buys it for fifteen thousand and then they, and so leave it sit as is and it becomes a parking lot. Because I know at the beginning, we didn't want that. We didn't want to see that just become someone's storage shed.
The whole goal was redeveloped.
Right, it wa, it wasn't just to leave it there, because someone could left that building up and store their personal stuff in there, for all, for all they cared, I mean, we wanted to avoid that, and I thought we were gonna do that in the same thing here. So that would be, they still have to have an investment into that property when they buy it.
The, the, I'm sorry, the new people, correct, okay. Makes sense.
The new person would. Investor in the property, right? The new buyer would have the investment?
The new whoever purchases it, wouldn't just go to keep it a parking lot.
Because the Why Not people have put an investment by tearing down it, what they've done, because it looks a lot better now than when it was a gas station.
But it's worthless, it's worthless.
Because they didn't look into the, the, being, um, being non-conforming, so now it takes away a lot of options, but. Because they tore down the wall, but wouldn't, wouldn't any developer, it's a question, because I wasn't here for all this, would any developer have discovered that basin and setback decorum, and would that not have been a problem for him too? They should have looked into that.
Okay.
That would be a good reason to put an extraordinary effort into preserving that wall.
Yeah, yeah, and the wall sat there by itself, falling over, you know, they could have raised it and, and started over it.
That's right, I guess, I, I was sort of no, there's actually a packet in the, I think we all just, it's at Souths Four, it's a basement. In in both instances, for more than fifty thousand, more than fifty thousand, they keep it or more than fifty thousand, it would be split, you know, two dollars to one for everything over fifty, and I guess I really wasn't sure. Yeah, this, then would the obligation that somebody gets that redevelopment spend at least a hundred thousand dollars simply carried forward to a developer, otherwise it's still an obligation.
Right. Of purchase. Yes, that's what I think, and then I think, I do think at the end, we talked about that if they were unsuccessful in any of that, after the end of that toll on the period, if the city would buy it back.
But we did say.
If we, if we could continue on with the LUG, I think that was the prior concern that we're going to check into to see if we would still get it, because now we're buying it back or selling it all.
What would supply that price?
This is exactly what they, they.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yep, that's what it stated.
Yeah.
That's it. It's stated.
They're going to have to agree to this.
Right. And I'm sorry, I didn't want to bend each other, but this is just a piece of information, so I'll get back to it. So.
What is the LUG?
Uh, well, the unit of government, sometimes in the, or sometimes they are LDU exemption, local governmental unit. It's at least under Wisconsin law, if under certain circumstances, if the city acquired a property, why did it for tax or equity, unless there's an imminent public health threat, the state can enforce that city to clean up, that's my quick dirty.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, over the super funds, like it could be a different background, but you typically, and in this case, we do, like, can typically get an opinion whether about whether an acquisition qualifies for the LUG exemption. But that exemption doesn't train, it's not like you can can't vaccinate the subsequent private property over with it. It's the city, and I'm sorry, we don't have a final answer on that. Yeah, the question was, the city acquired it through assignment of the county's tax foreclosure rights. That's crystal clear in the statute, but now we will fully, we need it as somebody else, so now we, I'm not sure that exemption still.
Because that would change this agreement, at least in my opinion.
Yeah.
My vote, it would change it, I wouldn't want it that.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking, maybe just change it to the city at its discretion. And that, with or without the LDU, a council could say, we want it back, how's how's, we don't care if we have the LDU.
So then what does, but then what does the twelve months do?
The twelve months would give them the report to try and find another developer or seller.
Okay, and if they don't, then then the city, then say at the end of that twelve months, the city would have a period of time,
it's specified here, let's say sixteen days, to exercise an option to take it back for ten thousand.
Right, but then what happens after that? And so, so let's say we don't want it.
Well, I guess the other question is, is there a remainder responsibility by that purchaser?
Because then we'd have to include that into this agreement, because we're changing key agreements.
Yeah, so the thought.
We don't have the LUG, which we need to find out.
Correct.
Then we'd have to have some language in there as to what they have to do to develop that property.
So the city's wanting to take it back for ten thousand dollars, that's, that's the end of the story. And if we don't, then what? We've still got an agreement that hasn't been fulfilled, and I wasn't clear, you know, the city, how good the city was just giving that off.
No, I don't think so, but then they're past their date by a lot. Because that puts it out a whole other years, so how much more time are we giving them to fulfill that, because that's already expired?
Right.
So we'd have to have new language in this agreement that would give them a certain amount of time to develop this to something.
Well, that's.
Otherwise, they they would just sit with it as a parking lot.
It's just.
Which is what we're trying not to do.
Or if it's a twelve-month period, we can say, well, it's out there, maybe within nine months, there need to be plans approved, uh, whether it's just a plan permission or back to the council. And then by the end of that twelve months, uh, a building for a full construction, I'm just, I'm reading.
Right, no, I'm, that's what I'm trying to get, is we should have a plan B in there, should we, should they not sell? Should they not develop, and should we not want to buy? We need to have the next phase in there. And this agreement, as others, it would just lapse and they could just let it happen.
Did Jack approve all three of those scenarios yet, or review what direction we ought to go here?
I I just came back to council, I don't think he would say that, and then Jack droid something out, because as we looked at, there were still questions.
Come on, Derek.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying about what happens at the end of that twelve months. If nothing has happened, could it be at the end of that twelve months? And they have neither sold it or developed it? That they have to start hanging like a vine? You know, it would be kind of like a, hey, look, we got to take care of this in twelve months, otherwise, there's going to be a penalty.
Which is going to be the balance of the hundred thousand dollars.
I think that would be a motivator.
And that's assuming, but I don't have to project, I know it's really beautiful, but what was represented as costs attributable property, which are basically planning, design, and down model. Is the council's okay with those, kind of like, our representative didn't count any of those? Why not, or fresh coast areas, construction, at least time, because those can, that was part of the deal also, account toward a hundred thousand dollars. But I guess what I wasn't clear on, you know, my sense is, does the, uh, the obligation to show investment, lose a hundred thousand dollars stay out? It's just sort of given us a stay for the twelve months.
And what's the end goal of that? Uh, because when you, when I was here and they moved, they had that gift shop and the yogurt and the bike rental. I mean, if we push it forward and continue, I mean, what's going to be there, I mean? What do we?
Still have room, they still have room to build something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not totally done, but it's going to be limited, or they'd have to buy more property. And it's B one, super, and zero front yard, et cetera. I'll say, hold it to the sidewalk, it gives you.
All I'm saying is also, when you crap something in there that, so we wait twelve months, and then we still don't know what they're doing, and we're still sitting in the same situation, you should have some idea of what direction they want to go. That's what I think.
Anybody else have any different recollections into the discussion?
I wasn't at that meeting, so, ah, make sure that I can make it that name.
Well, I don't, I I hate to put, I don't know what to think about the penalty, I hate to do that because they did tear it down, which is quite helpful to a new person that might buy it. The only thing is, if you don't put a penalty, how much work are they going to put into moving it? I I, it's kind of a hard one.
Right, because.
At the end of the day, if there's not that, so I'll just, why talk about a twelve-month extension?
Right. So, I mean, maybe we can go to twelve months, and then if it's unsuccessful, maybe this would be a little bit tighter on the nanny plans, so they should start working out most of them. I guess they have no one ready to buy it.
Well, the idea, the idea, with the idea you're going to implement, because somebody's going to waste money on plans.
Right.
It's tough, it was, it was well-intended, if the city acquired it for all the right reasons. Uh, Why Not, obviously, they made a big investment in the community, they meant well, but we are where we are.
It's great property too, location.
It is, it's got a hundred two C two to friendly jump Washington Street, you could have a new recite a sound wave or something there. But that's not, the folks that blew air, that's a deal's a deal. Yeah. Okay, well, based on what I'm hearing, I I will go back and try to craft something when I discuss it with the Why Not folks. Say, a year extension, and I I'll still say, May thirty-one, how that's a little more than a year. But what does that give, that gives a year to yourself and share the proceeds. And I assume if 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 it is over fifty thousand and the proceeds are shared, any money shared in the city counts against that investment threshold. Uh, or you find another developer who has plans, who's in whatever nine months after May thirty-one, this year is, and for, for the development of the property that represents an investment of at least a hundred thousand dollars, this is viable from a zoning standpoint.
More to check on the LUG.
Yeah.
See if it's even possible that we would even want to enter to buy it.
Yeah. But I guess at the end of the day, is, is the city saying, we will buy it for, we have an option, twelve months passes, we have an option to buy for ten thousand dollars. And obviously, in the meantime, you're responsible for property taxes on the property and keeping the snow shovel with the sidewalks and hallways. It's your property.
And if we do re-buy it, Greg, can we reuse the L?
That's the big question, and I'm sorry, we don't have an answer.
But that's true.
Yeah, because we, we would not be acquiring it under the circumstances.
The original, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to know that before we, that is an agreement.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that helps if nobody has any disagreement with this scenario.
Do we need a backup in case we don't want it? I haven't mentioned that. Like, when it comes to a year from now, and we say, no, we don't even want it, do we need it?
Well, I mean, we risk having a vacant lot on the main street, we had that right law. Uh, I'm not going to dispute, you know, to make an argument, arguing it's worth less, because now you're stuck with a twenty-foot rear yard setback. It could, at least now we're willing, if you if you just want to get rid of the ugly, you tear down a canopy, it's possible, and see that that's not the goal. But it looks, even that would have a lot back of an empty, even where it's at there for ten, ten years, twelve years in.
Is there any vehicle that we could reduce that twenty-foot setback to ten even? I mean, just to make it more attractive to any, any developer.
The implications anywhere else, I mean, obviously, that part of code could always be revisited, the zoning code. All I think about it, you know, but twenty, twenty-foot rear, I think, there's zero front yard setback. There's very little street side yard setback. Probably one of the best arguments for that twenty feet is fire protection, so you're not braying up against. But then again, the rebuilding, the fire, a fire rated exterior wall. It's not out of the question, I'm not thinking all the way through it, they, they solve one problem, they're creating other.
Right, I'm just thinking that would make it more attractive, and that's the way it was, you know, some kind of grandfathered in.
Yeah, they wanted it so the building was in the back, so they could have stuff in the front.
Yeah.
Not like you build a building in the front, but you wouldn't be able to see the upper stuff in there.
Yeah.
We could look at that, it's, you know, I don't want anyone to say the city's doing that just because it's the city's property, they want the deal to work, but, you know.
Well, I mean, in the end, it's, it's, the objective is to get a development there.
Right. And honestly, a solid concrete, or a concrete block, or a wall, like, let's say, it ain't going to catch fire.
Yeah, or if it was so many feet from the residence, that way at least they could go all the way to the back. Um, half the lot.
Or as not, not so long, that's right, because a lot of it, you're up against the backyard. Right, that's what I would be worried about changing that setback.
Where it's, and all of where it butts.
Where it butts, that the rest of the neighborhood, that helps.
Yeah. Okay, we got a bunch of this to look at there, but I think you've given me something to hand out.
Don't leave us a controversy.
That's a good one, Greg, this is at the, at the main work session. I'm sorry, that, that was one where we went back and looked at the minutes, we're going to break that agreement to council, and I said, I don't think we quite know where we are here, this, this helps a little.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, onto number five, discussion items. City attorney upcoming retirement.
Yes, Bruce announced earlier this year to me that, that he does plan to retire.
Deny it.
So, yeah.
Deny it.
Uh, D.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I have, so with A, we're a bit of a frontier, we, by the way, we will announce as we prepare my next director. Get that offer, it's accepted Friday, but, um, I have had a discussion with Jack's firm about, and understand, we don't have a contract for any period of time, they're continuing, at least for several months, our relationship with the firm while we evaluate, they have two attorneys into a fair amount of municipal practice out of their home office in Monique. One actually is a former city planner, which is kind of interesting, because we've talked about the need for a pretty major review and update of our zoning code. Locally, they have David Kowaloski, David Kowalski, I'm sorry, Eric Pangor. Dave is the litigator, from my knowledge. Eric does some general law, I would say, I think it's fair to say, neither of them has the depth of municipal practice that Jack has had. So I would be inclined to stay with West and Dunn, month to month, at a badly way, which is where we are. I don't have any other good person to date, which right now, I'm sorry for coming up on that point. So the other, the other thing that I am, says I'm waiting to get a ladder from them, is I want it to be no more than what our routine is now, and I want to know that Jack, if he continued with West and Dunn, um, would be covered by that as, and that's taken in that too. He indicates he's agreeable to, I'd like to see him off council and available, if we need to pull him in on something that he developed. I don't know, although we have to do that, but I think that access is important, given that he's filled that role for twenty-six years. So, um, I don't know that that's the, the long-term solution, but again, if we can continue that on a month to month, at a badly the services being provided, that's the best I have. So are they going to be in person? By indication, I want an attorney in person here for our meetings. We may, with, uh, as far as staff involved in developing ordinances for things outside just the, the, the coverage, we may be doing more of that virtually with their other attorneys. So that might offset Jack being here on Mondays, or Monday afternoons, as he's regular with it. But, um, I do want, and I expect you guys would, I do want.
That's what I was adding.
Yeah, first of all, make sure we stay out of trouble on public meetings law and most things. Not sure what I would say, they might have to defer on some of the substantive issues that are on the agenda, you know, questions come up on the fly. But, uh, that, that's been part of what I've addressed as well, the need for regular meetings, want an attorney physically here who were at. That's a, you know, it's, it's not staff hire, we, we never in my time, and before that, had city employee with city attorney, but a city manager appointment, I want council to be comfortable with it, because, you know, you can go to the city attorney, I think she's independent, uh, the city manager, you shouldn't be comfortable doing that, and, uh, but on the same token, I, I don't know a lot of firms that are in the top round, who have a robust municipal practice. We'll get an update on the future agenda, at least on who would be here as the two local attorneys. I don't know what plans they might have with Jack's position, possibly replace that position here locally. That's all I really have.
Okay.
But I want you to be aware.
Okay, upcoming leave.
Yeah, I communicated this separately to the city council, I'm anticipating, uh, the need to be out for four, six weeks, they tell me, like I told the department heads on the market, I jumped out of the last work session. Uh, I expect to, I don't know, but I would expect sooner than that to at least be able to be unengaging by phone and, uh, G and E, you know, driving people around. I'll update you as this thing's going along, but that's, I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that, and will be acting in my absence, will be in touch regularly. Obviously, the police department in recent instances has pretty heavy duty priorities. If that gets to be a problem, if there's an uptick in activity related to that, then I would look at perhaps one of the other departments being designated, but the police chief for a long time, that's been designated acting. I appreciate his willingness to do that, and that probably goes about the same, but I'll say that, I've got most confidence, and I'll offer you.
I agree.
That's only on the half, I'll give you more of an update after, after yourself.
Coming, what, what, there's a date again, exactly, Greg.
I, I will be here as part of the day next Monday, then we'll be covering the next Monday, next meeting.
I'm going to just read.
So I'm going for next Monday forward.
Okay.
And related to that, I just thought it would be helpful, this isn't guarantee, that, uh, certainly this is a little bit odd, it's going to be kind of yucky, but I thought it would be helpful to at least walk through some of the things that we know are coming or expect are coming in May and June to council. Would be bad to do this periodically. Wouldn't be bad to do this periodically. Now, it's coming up, but I expect, uh, I just wanted to share, some of them are pretty basic, some of them are more detailed. The next agenda, the next regular meeting agenda for next Monday, it's, uh, it's, we have an upcoming both state drinking water week and police week. So, you'll have resolutions from the two department heads there for council action. The bid opening for scattered site lead water service lateral replacements is this week Thursday. If, if it's very clear cut, and usually it's low qualifying bitters, Matt have a recommendation, is what our consulting engineers, for your May sixth meeting agenda. And Matt, wanna speak to that a little bit, as to round numbers, engineers, process, and number of services, it's actually getting.
Right now, we are advertising three hundred water service replacements and two hundred sanitary public-ish side sanitary laterals. And so laterals that would be within the roadway, uh, so if in the future at some time, um, they want to or have an issue, they're not ripping up the road. So, we have, uh, DNR funding for that.
That's our best estimate based on past experience.
Right, two out of every three. Awesome. Uh, so, again, we're without actual, so like, in lateral, we're guessing, uh, but the, uh, we expanded our area that we're going to try and encompass, because our original area had more complying water services than non-compliant. So, we expanded our, uh, reach that we're gonna use all of our harbor funds up with.
So, this is intended to fully consume the balance of our harbor funds, and how many matching funds have been offered?
And along with that, uh, the, uh, clear water for private side, and the, uh,
Molder.
For dollar amounts, uh, in excess of people can, um,
Molder.
Or extend and private water service payments corrected by council.
Now, council. Already, council was establishing a fund, there were some follow-ups, so we need to bring that to council. So, we had a discussion about policy of interest rate.
Finally, it's an interest rate, uh, and that's all dependent on, uh, what we're gonna get a little bit. But right now, we are anticipating two over harbor.
Right, and was, not even in any council about that at the time, or police week, I remember making the promise that was coming back, so.
Matt, so the three hundred number you mentioned, um, does that include any breakage, emergency individual home breakage of the water line in the front? And if they determine it's lead, they wanna replace that, would you apply that to there?
That would be, uh, the three hundred is a complete water service from the main to the water meter.
Okay, so you're estimating you're gonna have three hundred of those?
Yep. And that's, uh, a number from Andrew and Scott all working together, trying to come up with that number, and keeping it within our budget, our inherent estimate. Uh, so we can utilize, utilize the harbor funds appropriately and maximize what we can.
Three hundred is the big lift, remember, and that's in addition to about fifty, yesterday, Rosebrook, but we've got about fifty hundred out there yet, so. This is about twenty-five percent of the total light service levels there.
So, we, we don't know our interest rate on that yet?
Our interest rate is something, it was like twenty-five? Yeah, it's less than a percent of state drinking water.
State drink.
Money that we would be loaned, that we could insurance loan to the homeowners for their private side, out of the cell. To the extent of twenty-five hundred dollar grant, which we're making also out of our harbor fund. Uh, to the extent they have a balance about, if there is a balance after that twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, we still have that twenty-five hundred?
Right, except we didn't qualify for it.
We didn't qualify under safe drinking, so we are going to supplement that with harbor funds.
Yeah, that's legit with our budget, it can't be this, the location, I agree with that. Because county doesn't always, even if our policy, county doesn't always, they're, they're not to match that.
Right.
They're okay with us.
Utilizing that.
Utilizing that, yeah, and I think maybe that's another policy decision, let's say, you've got a, you know, twenty-five hundred doesn't cover your private side lateral cost, we don't wanna be doing like five-year loan for fifty bucks.
It was two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so it has to be at least two hundred and fifty over, oh, two hundred and fifty built up on, and that would up qualify for loan.
And that's on the bar.
Water.
If they choose to do the sanitary lateral from the road to the house, that's a hundred percent their cost, and basically build this year. And the contract will be extended throughout twenty twenty-four into twenty twenty-five. I think, uh, we're looking at having all pavement restoration completed by, uh, fall of next year.
Do you see any interest money on that? Any mon, any, can we, can we borrow money at a loan interest rate for them?
Not on the sanitary, not on the private sanitary.
Right.
Yeah, just for example, just with the lead and the water.
Yeah, if we can get a half percentage or something.
Right.
And sanitary water is from the street line, their street to the homeowner, right?
Technically, the sanitary lateral from the main to the house is all private. However, if it is in close proximity of the water service, we will do the portion within the road under clean water funds from DNR, uh, and give that problem or hazard, if deemed, uh, a hazard or poor quality, we would do that under our dimes, which is being, which has been past practice of reconstruction.
That's how we would do a reconstruction, if you're, if it's in proximity, you're running a pretty much the same pain in the street, yes or no, Senator?
You know, I might be wrong in this, but the, most of the older homes, the sewer line is always in the middle of the street, connected to. And the water line generally isn't real close, I don't know, but it's, it's, can be quite a distance between the water line and the sewer line. How, how are we making that distinction clear?
In most cases, the, well, as far as the mains, uh, the sanitary main is in most cases down the middle of the road.
Right, right.
Our main is usually, I'll call it one curve or the other.
Right, right.
So, uh, but going down the road, in a lot of cases, the private water service and the private sanitary lateral are in close proximity, close to being, I've been there.
Really?
So, if they more or less end up in that five-foot excavation, uh, we would look at doing both at the same time. If they are not, uh, definitely if they're not within the same, uh, concrete panel that would be replaced, we wouldn't go make an extra cut if not, if it weren't necessary.
Okay.
Now, if it is literally falling apart and collapsing in that nature, well, that obviously changes the circumstances. But if it's in okay condition, we would probably leave it, even if it was twenty feet apart, for example.
So, that would be the standard, some maximum distance.
Some distance, yeah.
And if it's nineteen point five feet, not twenty, uh, it's like, it's a general call.
Okay. Uh, so, that's, uh, that's, that's a big thing that's come up. Chief, then we'll be back with ordinance amendment about prohibiting keeping certain animals. There were some questions that came up on that last time, which, uh, I think he's prepared to address. Yeah, I wasn't here for that time, but I did go back, we watched the questions that comes in, and there's a lot to change, changes to us. So, that'll be later, then, for next Monday, and similarly, an ordinance we've talked about, and it's not brought to council today. But then, a pretty short and sweet, uh, whose hearts ordinance, titled seven code, that would enable parks director to establish park rules that would have to be put in, uh, in signage, it's in there, but then could be enforced as violations of our ordinance. What, what kind of person did that, and think the image was a similar language in the code? We, it's that, all of a sudden, turns the parks director into a legislator, but, you know, you all have those central park out, new facilities, and all of a sudden, we've got skateboarders saying, we have an eventual problem, grinding on the seating walls. Well, we go through the process, come back to council, do reasonable ordinance, that's a public service, and that's effective. Or do empower parks director to set certain rules within parks that can be enforced under the general enforcement, penalty provision for parks ordinance. Uh, and maybe this provision that you, somewhere out there, list those rules, and the police would need it, somewhere the public and the council could access, correct? But keep it simple, you put down a beautiful new playground that the Shota Park, and generally, we allow dogs in parks, and we've got, been pretty good about a lot of that. But the first time you see a dog peeing on that nice new board in place stuff, it's like, well, I think we need a different rule here. And again, it's really meant to empower, I, I would say, those relatively minor things, and hopefully not things the council would see as being legislative issues, but minor things where there are behaviors or specific features that are added, or cheese, we didn't think of that. But it isn't just putting on a sign that's toothless, you'd actually have the ability to do some enforcement. I did ask Jack one question, and I, I may screw things up by doing that, but I said, what, what constitutes a park? I think generally, if something like, is it the Shota Park, or Central Park, or places we call parks, I'd hard argue. But, for example, we've had recent issues with hamburgers overnight at the little waysize, and city now owns all the left memorial drive. Not just the big ones, Spirit of the Rivers, but those little ones, they don't necessarily jump out to me as being parks, but they probably ought to be somehow identified as following under our park ordinance, I think.
The only thing that I question with that is, what if it's a rule that ends up, I guess, controversial, not to say that it would, but maybe where, where dogs aren't allowed? And then the general public comes back and says, well, wait a minute, who voted on this?
Yeah.
And then it becomes, is there, is there somewhere it can be like a temporary rule, but then the ice come back to here?
That's more or less the intention, too, is that you can do those quick temporary rules and hack down fast. Uh, for instance, our ice is getting marked up, our synthetic ice, and clearly, there's nothing that was preventing that. Uh, other than, you know, we're created with kind of guiding youth elsewhere and having extra controls, so just annoying all there. But there's nothing to alleviate that, we're a simple rule changer, that's real quick to be able to do it. And then clearly, if it's controversial, I think that's a topic that one of the current council could be discussing that.
Would it be easier just to make that rule as a temporary rule and come back, you know, within a month time, to just give that general oversight, just in case it becomes that?
Right now, we don't have the ability to make that work.
No, I'm saying that part of this, because we're not, they do that.
Uh, I guess, and I had raised this issue, it's not in the draft, Jack, it's not right now, what I can argue for, is if ultimately, you're saying it's only temporary, it's only permanent, council acts on it, well, then you're still into, you need to publish it somewhere, so, right? You order this, so, there's a cost there. An alternative, maybe, would be the, you know, within thirty days of, uh, developing a new rule like that, it will be reported to the council, so like, say, a consent agenda, I have recent, you know, recent rules adopted on the park use ordinance, and some language in there that at any point, council, of course, could, could think right, or could counterban or negate any of those rules.
Well, it's something a lot of people in the city.
Well, yeah, that, that, but I get it, ultimately, the council has to be authoritative.
Right, just 'cause ninety-eight percent of them probably agree, it's gonna be that two percent that falls in there, that all hell breaks loose in here, I guess.
Yeah.
And not, not we like the few guys to make the rules, and now this person, this person, and that person, it's.
If we go that route.
It's a necessary state. Right, you know, a local law, we don't want that.
That gives us the time to accomplish what you were talking about.
Right, that, that, I think that would be good, that would be good, set agenda and say, yes, it's gone through.
A mechanism to inform the council and the ability of the council to take ultimate.
You know, we, we might, we get why you did this, but, uh, obviously, everyone liked that, right?
I think you can ultimately, so say, try to, you can ultimately get.
And again, I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but it's the one time that, you'll have the press during, everyone else is saying, you're not allowing dogs here, there, when they always were there. It's just one person that says you can't have it.
Yeah, or I, I don't even know what to be between now and Monday, or if you get all the staff, you get to, or something. That's not the intent, the intent, to be able to turn on a dime and say, oops, we got a problem that nobody anticipated, let's take care of it. Uh, I'll pass that along to Jack, but I'm not gonna give him more advice than the council. And I think it's already pretty clear, it's something that's clear, any rule established in that manner, it'd be undone by a simple action of council. At, I don't even know the name of the court. Does that make sense? Okay. Sorry, but this should go to, uh, two, uh, but, um, six. Uh, I don't know what the heck it is with our economy, making anything, but, uh, you'll get an update, Matt will get an update Thursday on why truck be over. The two five-yard replacement, five-yard dump trucks you approved by the last summer, right there?
Uh, March.
Our dump truck, probably aren't gonna be here for the coming winter. And, uh, you know, we, we, the council authorized ordering from last year, we budgeted half last year and half this year for the trucks. Plus the plow, some bins, and all of them, just, we'll share that update, it's frustrating, it's hectic, it's just, it's simple, dump trucks. Uh, but while we have something not coming in, there is some data that's come up on the public works capital period, let's just be brief with the faster software.
Right now, we are using, uh, what is known as faster, it's our fleet management software, to, uh, make sure we do, uh, proper accounting and tracking of equipment, uh, preventative maintenance, repairs, et cetera. We're also utilizing that software to do, uh, work orders for comfort repairs, and things of that nature, something that's not intended for that software, but we're doing it anyway. That version of faster is Windows-based. They have stopped selling that Windows-based platform in twenty-eleven. They have come out and said they are no longer supporting it as of, uh, next year. So, they are looking at, um, having us migrate from, uh, Windows to web-based over basically the next year or so, uh, it will take all our current data and put it into a Windows platform. Of course, at a cost, uh, of about sixty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen of that is roughly licensing fee, and the remaining balance is actually making that transition. Uh, gonna have this discussion a little further in detail with the public works committee on, uh, Wednesday night. Uh, and then looking ultimately at a recommendation to take some of the dump truck one gallon dollars and utilize it for the software migration.
But the license fee probably had to happen.
Yes.
In the future.
Yeah.
So, that's, sometimes we have this come up. It is on an upcoming agenda, I hope we make it to the next year's apple budget, I'll just throw up, uh, the controls for the elevator, which will randomly take it based on, just, any work times that is thirty-one years old. Uh, we just gotta put on that, a lot of hundred forty thousand dollars. Yeah. Okay, the HVAC controls, we're, we're good. Okay, that's, that's that. And then, I will have a number of reappointments, people that are taking reappointments that are eligible for such, uh, city boards and committees, and a few new ones, a new appointment. and a few new ones, I mean, new appointments to make, I'll do, I must have as many as I can, I'm not saying the office and strike will come in on the side. Um the main, so that, those are things we know about for the, for next Monday. Looking ahead to May twenty, it'll be public works week, that very week, and Matt will bring you the resolution on that. Uh there'll be a public hearing on uh rezoning the two thousand four to two thousand six fourteen street from I two industrial to be one business district. That is uh S. Lerner, Dale, S. Lerner, uh his cabinet shop over there. Dale's perfectly fine making cabinets in I two zone. However, he's got a couple of prospective tenant businesses, so the second building that he owns, they used to be an office for a construction company and they clearly are B type. They, they don't block in industrial district, they go in, this is a zone district, uh make a lot sort of a little shorter. Uh the B one district does allow cabinet making as a conditional use, so it's a, you know, kind of struggling through this, you know, rezoning and then maybe a conditional use to keep doing what you're already doing. If you wanna make it possible for these commercial business type uses in the second building that's on your property, you need different zone, so he's agreeable to that, the plan commission is recommended approval episode of February, or sorry, April, I shouldn't know. Um, by the second meeting in May, we should have a recommendation from the plant commission on amending the T I D twelve boundaries of project plan. That's we, we talked about at council, that's to a lot of possible systems to develop and to so easy expansion plus some other activity. Uh that will be out for public hearing in part of the plant commission on May four, May thirteen. And then their recommendations will come to council for action on May twenty. Then to the joint review board for their approval. Joint review board had their initial information released this past week. Matt, should be bringing you, May twenty makes sense for this?
I'm hoping so.
Okay, um we've got a commitment to DOT, you're an understanding DOT, that they are going to, they, they are willing to put a pedestrian crossing, mark crosswalk at Columbus and the drive, go across the drive. If there's sidewalk that connects all the way up to the drive, that would be requiring the installation of sidewalk along the Columbus Street front, which would be a short line crisis. Five hundred seventy-five feet. Matt's had discussions with the property owner, there's provision on the special assessment law that if they may have the right to adhere, the council could proceed to do a special assessment without going through that thought draw, through the public hearing and all that. Uh so that discussion's been pretty positive so far, but we'd expect the second meeting in May. Uh we need to be asking you to set a hearing on a special assessment or receive, if you just receive the file and acknowledge your waiver for the property. So that's, that's coming. Um ordinance pertaining to panels for dock crews or licensing, we thought we had that strength not too long ago, but a change in the state statute.
Yep, so they changed the language from panel to dock crew. We need to update our ordinance to respond to that.
And we decided to say that ordinance pertaining to keeping certain panels um to the other day, six together, but at the table level. And then the annual CMR, by its name, this resolution, that's when you get the report card on the waste water operations for the past year, DNR requires council act on that, of course, that gets to the agents. Looking ahead to June, not sure which meeting yet, but the plant commission will have in front of it in May, proposed zoning code, uh yeah, zoning code amendment, that would create a proposed downtown overlay district that would address properties in the downtown area. It's pretty much whether there's also commercial, industrial or residential, with some uh overriding zone provisions that it's like a man on community warehouses within that area. Uh some proposed basic design standards for reconstruction in that area.
Well, that addressed the storage units on that.
It would address storage units, yeah, throughout the downtown, inclusive of a site that was controversial, that's one ago. Uh also, we've promoted the use of shipping containers for storage in that area because there are places tech in Antwerp where it was some pretty large storage unit installations that are buildings, but are shipping containers. So uh because it relates also to downtown design, uh I've had Elizabeth leave with the Main Street Design Committee, I remember that.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, and I understand it's pretty well received there.
It's great, I think.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm asking the listeners, is the design taken to the whole Main Street board?
Okay.
So there ain't no question about where Main Street stands on it, unlike other recent issues. Main Street's director has actually made changes, like sidewalk details. Okay. I like this one to be crystal clear, it's the Main Street board onward to this.
Right, and Elizabeth can send me documentation, so I can.
Yeah, she will.
There were some things that, yeah, she presented to us.
Okay, but there were some heavy changes and.
There could have been.
Okay.
But just so, so we have something to give to everybody of the board.
I'll send her, no, actually it'd be great if you, you know, probably do.
There's some.
And you guys could, you could look at the document on that, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Um and that's consistent with what the city's adopted goals for coming. Uh we hope that we'll be in a position in June to be able to bid on San Bay, base three, I wanna say, base three, in particular.
Two.
Still needs some final DNR approval on stormwater design. Uh we could very well be ready for bids for the Washington Street treaty. Sidewalk project, that's the sidewalk widening, depending on how they fight pet traffic.
Uh it is just, uh, the consultant asking whether or not city workers are good in that regard. I'm saying we could believe the protective wall.
Ah.
They are going to bring that forward to the DOT next Monday.
Good. Cause in, in our humble opinions, we know our, what our capabilities are, we can pour a sidewalk in on Bridge Deck.
And the response, initial response I got back was there is still some minor structural component on Bridge Deck itself. I asked for clarification of that was, it didn't respond.
Okay.
So, well, maybe we could do ninety percent or something like that.
That'd be great, just, you know. To the extent public works crews can do projects, that's where I'd be back into the general, because we're not, aren't the, uh, we do this. Um, we will have, it probably could have in May, I'm suggesting to wait for the June work session presentation report from the ad hoc logistics committee. Um I haven't asked, I didn't ask Mike about this recently, Adam, does that committee have another meeting?
We do have two more, the possible end of May.
Okay. So I don't think end of June would be stopping a lot.
No, much, as far as their impact.
That's a, that's a big issue. Uh I did get an email from the swim club, swim, Sunday's board members today, knowing they've got some bills they should pay, but can't necessarily pay them. Uh I'll share that with the city attorney, first by acquiring how, whether the city wanted to in the near term take title to that property and I, I don't think we're there yet as far as taking that, but it's, I mean, we're dealing with an entity that under our commission has no money to pay any bills like for property liability insurance, or taxes, or anything. I'm not going too far afield because you heard the presentation that early on that the city doesn't do it and we'll probably end up fighting a fall of an abandoned property in our tenants. So, that would be a sale for that. I'll, I'll pass that on to the attorney for start. And then just a reminder, it's that season, most of the major cameras licenses uh come up for July once, so you'll have all, all of the coverage operator license, or you'll see a few new ones, letter licenses, landscapers, all very capable handled by our city corps, which we do by the P D. Um sometime in May or June, we hope to see some of these applications for the side grants we've talked about at recent meetings, where the city's got various pots on, I mean, who can help, and Main Street got little that can help. Uh I can tell you that Jason Ring and I now, with Tim Klein, were hooked today. Tim had applied for it and was awarded ten thousand aside grant money last year based on the design supplemental. The city, Main Street was providing five of that, the city was managing five. Uh based on our discussion today, it's been some fairly large changes in this design, and every cool one would be uh not a full garage door, but like a four foot high garage door that would lift up at the front, so it could be a dining area, build it open out to the street, like in the summertime. Some other possible changes in signage that these, that Jason and I thought by rights should go back to the Main Street Design Committee. I think, I think they did pretty favorable on his designs, but these are pretty big changes. He's going to get a new drawing, revise cost estimates. I did convey, and this goes back to last fall, council, which we did discuss in the closed session, possible additional assistance beyond the typical maximum ten thousand dollar for side grant for the work because it's got so much beside. And uh I told him that on a fifty fifty match, if you can show, you know, obviously expenses that relate to that aside renovation and signage, um you know, we could potentially be looking up to thirty thousand, twelve twenty-five city, five Main Streets. So it would be based on getting design, updated cost estimates, and uh so we'll, we'll cover some more details. Meridian Wellness, uh over at the old bank building on Lincoln Street, I understand has an application into Main Street and Buffalo Factories. And provided me with a copy of that, that line, that's been approved by committee or is that coming out?
The Meridian Wellness, that was just our input.
Okay.
And yeah, it was, yeah, we liked it, maybe, I think this, we told Elizabeth, yeah, we recommended.
Okay, very good, so that, on these, the council in the past, and reaffirmed it just last month, this month, earlier this month, has said, you know, we'll rely on Main Street and take the applications, Main Street's design committee will do the review both for those that are in the Main Street district and those that are elsewhere in town like Meridian.
Right.
We don't have a design review function opposite here. But then the actual approval will still come to council to say, okay, they've done two through five thousand toward this ten thousand dollar grant in case of Meridian, so that should be coming.
Is that right, a hundred percent funded by the tip?
Uh no, there's fifty fifty match requirement. So um on the grant gentleman's fifty fifty requirement, Main Street's got ten thousand dollars in its budget this year for projects that are in the via, they've got five thousand of that earmarked for the hook. They spent a little bit on a new sign for Lake Shore Restoration up in the old, uh, the printing company. Unfortunately, they've got about maybe forty-five hundred dollars left. But for example, Meridian is outside the business district, it's not downtown. There, one, one of the pots money we have is the old high school, Tiff District, I think it's number eight. Anything within half a mile, Meridian property falls there, so the city would fund a hundred percent on a fifty fifty matching grant for the business.
Out of the tip.
Out of the tip, yeah, Main Street's only role there would be the, the design review. Does that make sense? And then we've got a couple others that are looking at sign grants, we've got a business that's being located. And we're certainly very much open to see if Casa Mexico has any concerns desires with a whole new wall being exposed there and an opportunity for some south facing signage that might be, that's up to them, but uh I've left them at six there. So um there's some that might be coming down the pipe, but this is just then to, based on talking with city staff and then specifically we can just receive that, that headshot. That's all, that's it, close session.
Okay, uh, close session, the city council reserves the right to enter into close session per Statute nineteen dot eight five one E liberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds or conducting other specified business, called a business, whenever competitive, competitive or bargaining reason require close session. Tonight, we have discussed possible amendments to sixteen development agreement with Confluence LLC for proposed development on city-owned former Hickers East High Site and the Confluence Development. Do you anticipate coming out of close session, voting then?
It is possible, it may be a vote.
Okay. So looking for motion to go into close session. Bye, Tim. Bonnie, you got a second, uh roll call.
Shannon, Nervy.
Going into close session, going into close session.
Oh, yeah, yes, I, I.
Phil, Lex.
Aye.
Doug, Frank.
Aye.
Tim, Petrie.
Aye.
Bobby, Shiloh, Miss.
Aye.
Doc, Stuck, Wesley.
Aye.
Adam, Mosky.
Aye.
Don, Littlether.
Aye.
Mark, Pitt.
Aye.
All those roll call votes going into close, we're just both coming out.
Okay.
Yep, uh that's the same, we sometimes freak it.
Never mind, is that mean like the cameras are off or like, or is it roll call?
Yep, that's where the lawyers, the seats.
Oh.
Yep.